I know we have a lot going on tonight. So we're here tonight, Tuesday, February 25th, for the Select Board meeting. This meeting will be held in hybrid format. The Select Board is here in person, members of the public, which I can see quite a few of you may attend in person. In addition, anyone watching remotely, you can go onto the town website, go to the calendar, click on the Zoom link, you join the meeting. If you don't have access to a computer, this meeting is being recorded. And other than that, I think we are good to go. Call to order at 6:00. So I am going to start with, we have a very hard stop tonight. We have the Warrant Committee here, and they are going to be using the room at 7:30. So I want to set the stage for, we've got a presentation by Onyx Partners Limited regarding their proposal for a portion of the 40 acres of the town-owned property located at MAP 63 Parcel 004 Hospital Road, also known as Parcel B of the former Medfield State Hospital property. And I just want to start the meeting with, this is an informational meeting this evening. Nothing has been agreed to. We've had, I've had a one-off with Onyx, Pete's had a one-off, Gus has had a one-off. Now we want to bring them in to present. I personally received a series of emails. I believe my board members have received emails. And there's a lot of misinformation out there right now. So I just want to set the record. It's informational tonight. We're going to hear from the Onyx Partners, what they're looking to build in terms of how many basketball courts, or I don't want to get ahead of myself, what the sports facility would be all about. But this is, we're looking at land that is town-owned, that we acquired when we acquired the state hospital. The town has not built on town-owned land in a very long time. The last piece of property that we sold that got developed is what we see as the enclave on Ice House Road. So there's a lot of land, I want to say anywhere between 40% to 50% of the town of Medfield is land that is trusty land, conservation land, open space. So when you see large developments going on in Medfield, a lot of times what you're seeing is residents that have been generational families that are finally selling their land. But Medfield does not own a lot of land in this town. So getting this opportunity to have someone to come in and present something that we could potentially monetize, we have a very large bill coming at us if we are blessed enough to go forward and get a new school. So we are just looking tonight at ways, how can we look at parcels of land that we can sell to bring in additional dollars to help with the tax bill that's coming at us. So that is just setting the stage for, there's nothing that we've agreed to, but we would like to welcome Onyx Partners this evening to present their proposal. Anton? Yep. [laughing] To give you a one second. [S01] 22. And then I just want to kind of set the rules. So Onyx Partners can use the platform up here. We do have a microphone. And what we're, what we're pretty anal about is, we can all hear one another in this room, but when people are watching remote, they cannot. So that microphone comes in very helpful to project the voice on the recordings. You're not going to hear anything amplified here in this room. But I am going to ask, tonight's, Anton, his team's going to talk, we're going to take some questions. I will pick up the pace so that I know that we can get as many questions in as possible between now and 7:30, and then the Warrant Committee will be stepping in, taking the room. Okay? All right, welcome. [S02] Thank you. And that's, those are the slides.
That was a question. Is it slide that go along with this? Actually, Will, that's, okay.
Yep, and you've got it, Frank, so you can, yeah. [S01] Yep.
Perfect. So thank you, everyone, for giving us the chance to come in and informationally discuss some of the ideas that we've all had the chance to work through. My name is Anton Melphionda. I'm the founder and one of the principal partners on Onyx here in Needham. And then my partner Doug Richardson, who's here, been with me for better part of 20 years. So we're together in the planning, the planning, the design, a lot of the thinking that's gone into similar projects like this that we have done across the country in several different communities. And we wanted to just walk through with everyone and share, again, at this point, which is beyond conceptual. I would say it is our best guess, and what we thought would make sense for the property across from what is currently the state hospital we all go and walk the dogs. So with that, I think what we are hoping to do, if it's okay with you guys, is walk through the slide presentation, and then take any and all questions that everyone has. I will spoil the surprise by telling you that I'm sure that I can answer less than 2% of the questions that you have. Because we'll do our best, but this is kind of what we've come up with. If we know kind of what we're thinking or how it's proposed, we'll do our best. But as we said before, we've literally just started to share ideas about something that we think would be meaningful, that we think would lend itself to the property and the community. But at the end of the day, as you guys know, that's not for us to decide, it's for you guys to decide. So we want to walk you guys through this, and then we'll take as many questions as time will allow, and we'll go from there. [S01] And I just want to make a note for anyone
watching from home that can't see the audience. We have members of the Parks and Rec Commission here, as well as the Warrant Committee. So we've got two groups that are very impactful in making decisions, is we're going to be talking about recreational space. And we certainly want to make sure that Parks and Rec is here to ask questions and chime in as well. Thank you.
And so I think, just at the highest level, when we look at what, what brought us to this, it was the notion of having a community-based recreational facility that would be sighted and situated on the land, keeping a few elements that are, that we believe to be meaningful, and I think everyone would agree to be meaningful, first of all. So if your, if your, if your back is to the existing buildings, and you're staring out at what is the sledding hill, and then all the ballfields, what's very important is, I've driven up, as many of you guys driven up and down that road a million times, whoops, sorry, that's me. I don't know how to turn this off. So, so the sighting, when we get to that, is very important. So the sledding hills we were just talking about today with what's been going on with this winter with all the snow, that's a super meaningful element. So if you just imagine, for all of you guys that go, you're at the top of the sledding hill, kids are going down, unfortunately too far into the woods, but that's a whole separate conversation. So if you just imagine you're at the top, preserving that whole flat area at the top of the sledding hill to really preserve, not only preserve the ability to have the sledding hill, but then also access to the sledding hill where everyone knows that parking is challenged now. So you'll see in the layout, it actually contemplates providing safer access, so people aren't parking on the road. So that's on the sledding hill side. And then on the other side, where you, where the topography starts to go into where the ballfields are, you'll see that what we have laid out will gradually end off with a field, and then lend itself into the existing fields on that side. So that's the thinking from a high level. And then when you look at what we have as a building, just, just imagine that the building can be anything, it can be any color, it can be any height, it can have any architectural elements that people feel makes sense and will lend itself. Historically, everyone knows the building that was there, took some of those architectural elements the best that we could to tie them into that building. But at the end of the day, just think, A, building, not this building, because it can look like everything that, that anyone wants at the end of the day. So if we just start with that at a high level, we'll go through the slides, and then just get a sense from there of what our thinking was. Jump to the next slide. Can people see that? Probably not. No. Should I, I guess I'll read it, as challenging as that will be. And you know what? Actually, what we'll do is, we can, we can email this, I think, if that's all right with everyone. So if people want this, we can, we can email copies of this around. I know we have some for the board, but didn't realize how many people. So I don't know if we can raise the font on that. So when we look at this, again, without a name, people said, what's the name going to be? Well, that will be up to the community. We're not, there isn't a name, we're not thinking a name, it can be whatever makes the most sense. We can get to that. But let's just talk about what, what we see as far as the meaningful nature of what the facility would provide. Premier youth training facility, transformative impact, and I'm just going to read this and give you the narrative, just so everyone can see what's on the, on the screen. State-of-the-art facility, designed to empower youth athletes in the Metro West area, providing them with top-tier basketball and court training and development. Elevating the future of youth sports, creating a place where young athletes can develop skills, confidence, and leadership, fostering the next generation of basketball and court sports. Community-centered design, the facility will focus on inclusivity, I'm not even sure if that's a word, but we all know what it means, accessibility, and training for all skill levels and ages, from middle schoolers to aspiring college athletes. Innovative training programs, featuring professional-level coaching, cutting-edge training equipment, and dedicated space for both groups and individual sessions. So if we just look at that, our focus, again, inside, the structure is going to be eight court facilities. So whatever the court sport is that would be programmed privately for the programs that we're overseeing, which are predominantly basketball, both for men and women, which starts as young as kindergarten, and goes all the way to the end of, of high school, and I guess postgraduate at that point, but then also would allow any other activity that made sense, which is one of the things with Park and Rec that we talked about, which could be court-type sports. So people asked about pickleball, there seems to be other pickleball facilities in town, could it be used for pickleball? Absolutely. It can be used for yoga, anything that can be done on a court would, would have access to the facility. And it's not specifically for basketball, but that would be focused for one program. And then we'd have ample programs that could also take part in anything that would be seen as a court sport at different ports and, different points in time. Roots of our specific program, which we'll get into a little bit, local connections. Again, all of us live, in addition to Doug, one of our other partners, Brian, who lives in Medfield, is here, Rogers, who grew up in Dover, some other people who are tucked around. So we all live here, our office is in Needham. I live a few miles down the road here, first moved here from Western Mass to Medfield, and then moved over. Now we're in Dover with my three boy, well, one's in school, my 16, and then my 10. And so they're here, and I've been on that sledding hill for 18 years. So that's the meaningful nature of why I know the sledding hill inside and out. Not so much this year, because it's been kind of cold and icy. But so that, as far as who we are in the community and understanding the meaningful nature of the property. And my wife's there every single day with the dogs across the street. So we've seen it, we've seen the light, we've seen what it comes in, what should be there, and what, what we believe is important to the community from talking to people. But again, this is just, you know, part of what we've, what we've laid out. Partnership with the, with the town, I think is super meaningful, and a question that we've been asked a bunch. We have had the opportunity to have some very meaningful conversations and work sessions, most specifically with Parks and Rec. And what we did not know, when we first came forth with the presentation, and the idea of such a facility, was that the town of Medfield was in fact looking for a meaningful way to take the existing parks and recreational programming, and have a home, and have a place to be able to expand the current offering. So a bunch of hours were spent, a bunch of work sessions, a bunch of yellow pads and napkins and everything, putting ideas together. We didn't come to any conclusions, any kind of understanding, any kind of, this is how it should work, other than it seems like if everyone came together by having a facility like that, located in a great spot over on the outside of town, so that we have open space with the existing fields and everything that's going on, it seemed like it made sense for, for, for the town. And it also makes sense for the type of programming that we have. And again, all of that's early stage, but it just seemed like when we got together and had those work sessions, it seems like it made sense for everybody. So that was kind of our, our sense of how we can come together as a private organization with the town to try and make it work for everyone, so it's mutually beneficial. Next slide. The next slide is the first time you see a layout. And, you know, if we can zoom in on that. So when you look at something like this, I think what's important when you see this, is this, I'll give Doug credit. So when Doug says, what are we thinking? And I said, I don't know, what are we thinking? And I said, well, let's start with the building and the eight courts, which is, you'll see in the bottom left-hand corner, you just see a proposed building, which would have eight full-size basketball courts, as well as a center area, which would have amenities and facilities as part of that, whether it be training, whether it be restaurants, whether it be sports, whether it be similar, as, as folks may have seen over in Wellesley, where there's sports medicine and other training options there. Absolutely none of that has gone any further than just being ideas that we've thrown together, and that being the, the core building that you see in the bottom left-hand corner. The outside fields, again, we just laid them out there, so that people could see that it probably would make sense to have some kind of outside fields for not only what you see on the left-hand side, which is the proposed building, but then when we get to the right-hand side, that was where, with some input from Parks and Rec, we were able to site, and again, what you see there is a 20,000-square-foot facility that would have independent access on a, on a, on a scheduled basis, but controlled by the town, and that would ostensibly be a town building, in order to have Parks and Rec operating out of that proposed building, and then have access to the fields, which would provide shared access. And then also incorporated into the courts, we've, we've started to work through what it would look like to be able to have Parks and Rec actually be part of the year-round programming within the court buildings. So most importantly, what you see there, that, the yellow outline represents plus or minus 12 acres. So I think if you just imagine that that's a puzzle, and you can take those puzzle pieces, and within that rectangle, you can move them anywhere, because they can be sighted anywhere within that 12 acres. And then you can move the exterior, which represents the 12 acres, you can move that anywhere on the site. So what that means is, we arbitrarily chose this as, as what we thought made sense as a starting place. So the first thing, if you look at that and say, well, look at, now we're encroaching on the sledding hill. So this afternoon, when we were in the design room with Doug, he said, you know what, we can just shift the parking lot over, turn the buildings. So this is as conceptual as anything could be, it's really for illustration purposes only. And so I think just seeing this just allows you to have a vision, or a sense of what it would be if you're, as you're driving down Hospital Road, but how these buildings would, would be sighted, or could be sighted. But again, this is just really our first draft. All right, next slide. Again, when you, when you're looking at this building, Doug spent a tremendous amount of time looking at other examples of these types of facilities across the country, that have been with these types of courts, and then taking into account that, and again, there's a cost that comes with it. But the more architecturally, I'd say, the more architectural elements that we're able to incorporate, when we actually present the building for sighting and setting it back, the, the more you would travel up and down Hospital Road, and feel like this building belonged there, as opposed to just dropping a random building there. That's a whole process that we would go through with the town, taking as much impact, as much feedback, and as much input as we could, as to what type of, what type of elements, certainly on the front-facing side of the building. We have a number of different illustrations that we have, we didn't bring them, but we'll share them as we go forward, as to what things we think would make sense, that would blend into the topography and the landscape. So as you're going down Hospital Road, at any time, day or night, you're really seeing this fit in, because the last thing that you want to see is be driving down and feel like, it looks like someone just dropped a building there. So these, these are just some of our early ideas, which, which incorporate what, what I think are some nice elements of taking what could be a very plain building, in a very reasonable way, with some landscaping, which, which I think, again, is important, that's part of a separate process we, we would be going through, just to give everyone an idea of what our vision is. All right. And then, inspirationally, as we go to the next, these are, excuse me, some, some graphics that we've taken from other facilities that are similar in nature, that would show what, what you would see in a facility like this, bright, high ceilings, the ability to congregate, open areas for spectators, and then the training facilities that go along with it. So you see, there's the court sports, and then at the same time, there's a, there's a wonderful example of this, right outside of Philadelphia. And, and they do a lot of programming during the day, where you have yoga classes, and they have kickball for the younger kids, and they really just do any kind of programming, because these courts can all be separated by these very heavy-duty, large curtains that will come and act as medians between the courts. So the programming is, is absolutely not limited to court-type sports, and you can see that. And so this was one of the examples that we wanted to share here. Next slide. Some of the potential on the outside that we see here. Some of the potential on the outside that we see here. Again, these are really just, we call them idea boards. They're just things to share that go into our thinking as we put together, you know, a more meaningful sense of what the community is looking for and what we think the amenities would be. Next slide, which goes right to amenities within the facility. Things like a golf simulator, certainly food would be meaningful, at least one or two different options for that. Some kind of a sports gear. For, and again, it really depends. I mean, any of these are interchangeable. I was just thinking at PSI and Sportica, they have them specific to court sports, but it can just be something where it's limited where we've seen where you can have socks and shoes and just stuff that people would buy as well as you could have gear. I mean, it could be a Medfield, you know, sports store like we used to have when Lourdes was here and you could go in the corner of Lourdes and grab all that stuff. So just looking at the amenities, again, just a thought on that. So community area, which I think is nice because one of the things, if you go back to the sighting plan, you see is, as we know, is if you start to go back, you have a trail system that's there. Very easy for us during construction, I think would make sense. I think the dog piece is a little bit sensitive to folks because there's something across the street, but it's certainly an idea to consider. But within the walking, the biking and the hiking trails, it's very, very easy for us to look at that trail system that exists currently, to clean it, to sign it, to widen everything and make that an integral part of coming in right now where you would come in and go left to the fields where there's that open parking area. And as we know, you come in through those walking trails now and they could definitely use to be groomed and maintained with the access to the deeper woods area back there. And that's something that we would contemplate as part of the development is going in and doing that and having an understanding to maintain that on a going-forward basis for all the right reasons. So we think that that would be something meaningful as well. One thing here, when you look at the community centerpiece, and we have done absolutely nothing in the way of sharing ideas on behalf of some of the discussions with Parks and Rec because that would be completely up to Parks and Rec to be deciding how they want the building programmed. But if you just imagine a 20,000-square-foot footprint, which is super meaningful, that would be something that we would work on and just get a sense of the program. We do, it would be very expansive compared to what's available now, both for indoor and outdoor and year-round types of activities. But when you look at the community center, that to us was here just kind of as a placeholder for people to imagine how nice it would be to have that as a community center slash Parks and Rec. Playground, public art installation, some great examples of that in other projects that we've done in New England, across the country. It's a great way to tie in from an architectural standpoint. And then again, I keep going back to this notion of driving down Hospital Road and feeling like something belongs. It's just really simple, easy things in the way of landscaping, of shrubs, of berms, and then simple like outdoor art installations and things that are not super expensive, but they mean a lot. And it really just, when you're done with a project like this, it just really allows it to feel like it's always been there and it's a contour within the landscape. So that's one of the things when we talk about public art that we've done, we can share examples of that. So, how did we do? We did pretty good. So again, before we open it up to questions and happy to, I know that's a lot, and so I apologize if I was rambling a little bit and just going through all of it, but I figured it was best to just share with everyone what we've been up to for the last year or so. And then again, all of this could make all the sense in the world. Everyone could decide if the town has no interest in it. It's for the town to decide at the end of the day and we understand that, but we at least wanted to come here tonight and start the conversation and see what the dialogue would look like. So with that, I think if it's okay, we'll take.
So the way we'll do this is like any traditional select board meeting, I'll let my board members ask questions and then we'll let the audience ask questions. I just want to clarify one thing, Christine, I'm going to look to you on this. Based on timing, so we're having this meeting tonight, it's informational. If we get the vibe that we want to move forward with the annual town meeting warrant article that's currently on, this would still go out for RFP. This would, okay, so I just want to make sure you understand that.
Oh yeah, no, no.
That this is, you're presenting this, but when it comes time to put out, if we get support by the town and it makes sense, put out a request proposal. It could be for the people that come forward. But I think that, I just want people to realize this is just not a one-on-one, boom, done. Because it's town on land, because it's the state process requires, we would be going forward.
Oh yeah, no, I think the first time we met a year ago, that was very clear. So that's why I said, we're here to tell everyone what we think would work, but there's a hundred other people that could come forward with a better idea and that's wonderful. So we're just here to share what we think.
And again, that's just, you know, again, we've received a variety of emails. And I just want to get ahead of everyone's concern. We're not jumping the gun here. I love the fact that you've come forward, your passion is phenomenal. And so on that, because we are on a tight clock, I'm going to pass the baton to you, Pete.
Before we get off that point, can I just, I want to make sure what you just said is, that I understand clearly what town meeting article is. This says the town meeting will approve the project. I don't think that's correct. The article that you would see at town meeting would be the authorization for the select board to dispose of the property. Now, as a practical matter, if you hate the project, you're not going to want to authorize the select board to dispose of the property. But just to be clear, you know, the public would not go, or the voters would not go to the town meeting to approve the project, which I think the implication of that is this project needs to be fleshed out pretty well so that when the voters do go to town meeting, they're comfortable judging whether or not they should entrust the sale of the property to the select board or not. And then your point about it having to be a competitive process is true. But just in here, it sort of made it sound like they were voting on the project and it's.
In our materials?
Yeah, on your second page, the vision, the second blue box. It says that the town meeting to approve project, and it's actually town meeting to authorize sale of the land. And you would understand that the purpose of that would be to either sell the land to support this project, but because it's a competitive process or to entertain other ideas that would be in that same ballpark. Because we'd still have the obligation to sell the land in the best interest of the town.
Wait, wait, excuse me, one sec. The chair of the warrant committee has a quick question and I don't mind taking it. Do you mind jumping up to the? Oh, I was wondering if you guys were going to do that, okay, go ahead. Does Parks and Rec want to do the same thing? Do you have quorum here? Okay, so you might want to open your meeting as well if you have quorum. That's three out of five, okay, great.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to have the select, this is how normally we do a meeting. I will take all the questions, but I let the select board members pose their questions first and then we go out to the audience.
Anton, thank you very much for coming up with an idea and coming in tonight to present it to us. I would start just, I have a couple of comments and then I've got some questions too. But my first comment is that this is a, I think you've got a really high bar to pass because this is a premier location in the town of Medfield. It's a very precious town asset and in my mind, it's only likely to increase in value as Trinity finishes off their project. I mean, we haven't gotten into the money at all, but you know, obviously that would be the important thing for the town. I like the fact that it helps Park and Rec and that Park and Rec gets a facility out of it. It looks to me like it's a 20,000-square-foot facility that you're talking about, a separate one from your eight basketball courts. The, I think the traffic at this location is going to be a terrible problem for the town. I mean, I spend a lot of time going to fore kicks with my daughter and every turn of the hour down there is just a mess. And the amount of traffic, if this were to be put in, I would suggest that the town would cut off Hospital Road in the middle to make everybody go out to 27 because otherwise the traffic coming downtown from this would be too much, I think. I think that where you sighted it, and I know you just said that that's just sort of placing things. It's a historic viewscape there actually. And so I think one of the important things is if you're going to build anything, that you build it down by the railroad tracks, not up by the street. Let's see, what else? I guess from my conversation with you, I took away that you're going to run this through a nonprofit and so you wouldn't be paying any property taxes to the town. So that's a big feature to me going forward because I'd like to see the town getting. I mean, we're always looking at the fact that our taxes in Medfield are so incredibly high, number 25 in the state this year. We've improved slightly from number 15, but still, this wouldn't do anything in terms of relieving property taxes for the town, I don't think, would it?
It would, so actually, so the programming that we run is a not-for-profit. And that's done so that there are full-pay participants and then we're able to scholarship children that can't afford it. So the actual program and the entity, but the.
Real estate trust that owns it is a for-profit.
Correct, it's a for-profit, so it would be fully assessed the correct mill rate for taxes and would pay their full share of taxes.
Okay, good. And I had a question about the two fields. I didn't know about those, what sort of fields are those going to be? Those are going to be whatever people want.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, turf or grass, we just did it for illustration purposes because we thought it would be something that was meaningful. I'm sorry?
Is that something that you guys want or is that something you think Park and Recs wants?
Oh, I don't know the answer. We just put it there for illustration purposes, thinking that with this type of facility and the nice weather, people would want to be outside. So we just thought it would make sense when doing something like this. It just, it seemed to make sense, but again, it was there for illustration purposes.
Okay, all right. I thought of your whole proposal as basketball indoors and so. And then I guess it's way too early to be talking about what you're thinking of in terms of money for the town. You're talking about buying it, I guess, is what you told me.
Right.
But, yeah, all right, so that'll come later as to what the amount would be?
Oh yeah, we have. Yeah, we have no idea.
Okay. All right, that's it for me, thank you.
Sure, I'm going to do sort of like what Pete did with a couple of statements and observations as much as anything because as Eileen mentioned, we got a few emails that came in with some early opinions about a proposal that none of us had heard. So there's, but because of that, there's a few things, to the extent people are tuned in or people here are listening, there's a few things that I want to make sure we're clear to people. First off, when we talk, this is a not-for-profit in the sense there was, some of the emails we got was, we shouldn't just sell that property so some private developer can go make money and do what they want with it. That's not what we're talking about here. And in fact, when we talked, the introductory call, one of the things in my head going into it, I said, oh, looks like we're going to have to trade off getting a Parks and Rec facility that somebody's going to buy and we give them the land or we're going to have to decide to sell the land and push Parks and Rec off for another indeterminate amount. One of the things that I was happiest to hear in our conversation was the nature of your organization, which is a not-for-profit that is focused on trying to do things in collaboration with the towns that you operate in. And so for those who just thought this was a straight land transaction to a for-profit developer, my understanding is that that's not accurate. So for those people who felt that way, that's not accurate.
Gus, I'm thinking, I just heard that it is a for-profit land ownership deal because the owner of the property is a for-profit.
So the.
You'll give a better answer than that.
Yeah, so it's fine. So we would be purchasing the land and then we would build the building and then the town would assess the taxes based on what that building would, its fair share of taxes. There's one program, which is our primary program, which is a boys' and girls' youth basketball program that we would have probably 30 or 40% of the time occupying the facility. The balance would be for other community available activities. So our program is a not-for-profit. So the youth basketball program is a not-for-profit basketball program. Other than that, there is no reduced tax, there's nothing that we would be looking from for from the town in the way of any kind of tax reduction or abatement or anything of that nature.
Then we could drive revenue. And we would be driving revenue if we did programs there.
Right, so I think, and I think what that's, what that answer means is the property, the facility would be taxed for real estate purposes. The operation of your programs would not be taxed as a for-profit activity because it's not. So just to, for that will mean something because we have real estate taxes more so than, we rely more on real estate taxes than on, you know, if you have a restaurant, we might have, there might be some taxes, but outside of that.
Yeah, no, so the town would get, let's just, I'll say it this way. If the town, I'm not saying, if the town wanted a water park there, right? I'm just making this up. Town wanted a water park there and it was a for-profit, Six Flags, whatever it was, they would be paying the same taxes that we would. So there's nothing different. What happens inside, the programming for us, which is a part of it, is non-for-profit because it's a community-designed program. That's the only reason and the town isn't losing out on anything because there wouldn't be any taxes. Equipment, everything else would be subject to the same taxes. It's really just for our ability to enroll people within the community that want to partake that aren't able to. So it allows us to raise money and then scholarship children that aren't able to afford the program.
Okay, my next couple of comments, I'll give the Parks and Rec group a warning. Some of these are going to sound a little attacking, but I have some other things. Yeah, I thought, yeah, keep on there. So I want to ask a couple of questions about that. You know, they're sincere questions, I don't understand. But then I'll also come in with another point about the Parks and Rec and the facility and how many years there hasn't been one. My first observation is this discussion is not, and this is again more for the public, this is not preordained as just a Parks and Rec facility. And if anybody says that I'm wrong about that, I'd prefer, I'd like to get the pushback now. But when we had talked before, the idea was that you're trying to meet the community's needs. I don't mean that it won't have a very important impact on the Parks and Rec facility, but what I'm mindful of is the open space and recreation plan called for this community center. And I am highly confident that we're not going to have a community center and a significant Parks and Rec facility. So if this is the path we go down, I see this conversation as taking inputs from other groups. I don't think it would be on an even waiting with Parks and Rec. So that's not what I'm trying to say. But for instance, when you start talking about fixing up trails, I could see COA might have an interest in having some inputs in something like that because they have trails that go from Kingsbury Club through. And so that would be one thing. I assume there's the potential that the schools could have some interest in this as, at least as a stakeholder or as a user. So the only reason I bring that up much is you might be worried about why I said it. It's not that it's not a Parks and Rec facility. I'm saying that in terms of picking up the town's needs, it's not just a Parks and Rec facility that there's other needs, so just to make that clear. And then I had the second question that, I don't know, I don't know if this is an awkward question or not. You have two buildings. And I'm sitting there, so why is it two? Is there a good reason why it needs to be two buildings? And where I'm coming from is two buildings on a piece of property like that are going to use up more of those 12 acres than an equivalent square footage where they were connected. But I don't know if there's a good reason why they're separate.
Again, so the answer is there's not a good reason. And that's why I said if you look at all the elements, the way that we've designed it and imagine them as puzzle pieces, they can be placed anywhere on the board. So what we did was just took at the highest level, 12 acres, put the programming the way that we understood it made sense. And the buildings can be together, they can be separate, there can be fields, no fields. This was really just, you know, a first stab at the information that we got. And I think to your point about what is important to the community, when we first came with the idea, when we sat over a year ago, we had just come and proposed a recreational facility. It wasn't until we started the conversation about what that would be that we were made aware that there was actually a need at that time. And it was specifically just brought up that it was Parks and Rec. So again, the two conversations that we had about what the needs of, what would be meaningful for Parks and Rec is what was there. It's really not for us, nor was it part of what we originally came with to fully understand, because we don't, we'd like to, what's important to the community and then we can try and see how we embrace that. That was the logic behind it, nothing more.
Now they've gotten Parks and Rec semi-mad at me for the comments that I've just made. Okay, okay, so good, so you're. So you're not as mad as I thought you might be.
You have to be conscious at times, if you want to make sure you have questions.
I just don't want to be in the middle, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. Again, for those listening on this, the one other point I'll make is when I moved here in 1995, my youngest son wasn't born yet, and Parks and Rec was number five on the Capital Projects list. My son is now pushing 28. There is no Parks and Rec facility. And if you go through the capital projects we have with the Dale Street School, followed at one point at least, projected about 10 years later with the Wheelock School, understand this might be the single best opportunity the town has in, with the loss of the FAF Center and an even more urgent need. This may be, and I'm not weighing in yet, but this may be one of the best opportunities the town has to get access to a facility that Parks and Rec can run a proper program through or take advantage of that we're likely to see. It's been 30 years that I've been, I'm no longer waiting, but 30 years and it's not there yet, so I keep that in mind. And the only, that's it. So a couple of questions. Is there, I asked about the buildings. The illustration appears, so I think the short answer is you showed us that they were all puzzle pieces. The lower right corner seemed like two or three acres of that 12 acres wasn't actually used. So I'm assuming that that can, we could find a smarter way to use 12 acres or, yeah, I don't think we want to waste 12 developable acres on a place that we want to keep as woods, is what I'm saying.
No, and I think at the end of the day, when I go back to my, we can do anything, I guess, that we all decide at the end of the day. That was just what we came up with.
Okay.
So where it sits, what sits there, how it's sited, is just for everyone to weigh in.
Okay. One last question, then I'll hand it over. Dumb question, but you talked about there's the recreate, you know, the actual sports facilities, and then there are training facilities.
There's what, I'm sorry?
Training facilities. What are the training, are we talking weight room? I just was curious what they actually were.
It could be anything that would be ancillary to that. So it could be a weight room, it could be a physical therapy room, it could be anything that goes along that, in a recreational facility, none of it's been defined. They would just be, they would be the type of amenities that one would want to see in a training facility. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so I've got a couple of comments, some of it because of what I'm reading here in front of me because we have quite a few questions coming in from people remotely. Anything we do up there, certainly our conservation committee steps in. So we can't build up onto wetlands and, so what, again, everything that's being presented here tonight is conceptual, it's to get some feelers out there. So I'll ask a couple of questions. Anton, you've mentioned eight sports courts. Let's just say as we go down this, we, eight really needs to be pushed to six or four. Is that a showstopper?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Again, I don't know.
Okay.
But I don't see any reason why it would be.
Okay.
I think at some point, actually, let me, so I think at some point, like four or less probably becomes problematic, only, and I go back to the question where we haven't talked about whether the expectation from the community is that the land is worth a dollar or 6 billion. Like, we have no idea.
Yeah.
Right? And I would just say, knowing the costs, the meaningful nature of the investment, if you look at the programming, it's probably, once you get to four or below, it doesn't become financially viable. But I don't know that because we don't know the universe of what we're talking about.
And so the, all I'd want to do as we go through this conversation is to think about, we at one point, so I was head of, I was the chair of Parks and Rec back in like 2006, 2007. And we were literally looking at a 32,000 square foot, four-point-some-odd-million-dollar building, exactly where you're talking right now, right? That was where the Parks and Rec group was looking. We missed it by one vote back in 2007, I want to say. So this is not a new location for us to be talking about Parks and Rec. I may, I'm not trying to speak for Parks and Rec right now. I know there's been pushback that downtown is where it should be, and I'm not going to get into that tonight. But this is not a new location to think about Parks and Rec. And as Gus said, this is the ball that keeps getting pushed down the court. And we need something for our community. This is so badly needed. So to see that you've done the two separate buildings, I'm sure there's concerns and questions of how much control will the town really have? Those are things that we get into. If we get to the point where we say, we think we might have something here, then the next question is, what's the real brass tacks? Is it the town's building that we technically own that you've built? Are there rights we have we don't have? Is it in perpetuity? There's a lot of questions that still need to be answered, right? Because if we're selling the land, the question, one of them right here is, you know, do we lose complete control of it? And I'm not the legal expert here, but typically when I've seen those two things in the past, if we release land in a certain manner, it needs to stay in a certain manner, correct? So it's not like we could sell it to you, then you flip it to someone else and they do something wildly dramatic up there. It would be zoned or prepared to be a particular use property in perpetuity.
So there's a number of ways. So the answer is yes. So at the end of the day, if the community embraces the idea of this type of facility, right, and we get to that point, there's, and again, we don't know a lot, so I'm just saying there's a million different ways to make sure that in perpetuity, that it stays for what it is intended to do. So in the way of deed restrictions, in the way of limiting uses, there's a lot of ways that we can protect what can happen down the road.
Okay.
And when we get there, we can absolutely explore it. Again, for us, it's simply to have this facility, and then for the community, it's generationally to make sure that that's what's there.
Right.
So we can work to accomplish that, and that's just legalese, and we've been through that a million times.
Okay.
Not an issue.
And again, I think the question's been asked about the use of the fields outside. Again, not a showstopper, conceptual. If we could fit them in and it made sense, great. If, again, if we couldn't, so be it.
Yeah.
And I know that there's concern about, I know, well, suddenly there's a restaurant and there's this and there's that. If you're going to be housing a basketball tournament, if you're going to be housing a volleyball tournament, some of those people will want to stay on property, some of those people want to go downtown. I personally, I'll speak for myself, I'm not as concerned about the traffic because I'd rather have traffic up away from the center of town if we're going to have a lot of people. I mean, if anyone's ever been in Medfield and there's been a soccer tournament at Wheelock School, have you seen what happens down there? And then everyone makes a mad rush to the center of town. I'd rather have things pushed out and then bring people into our various restaurants. But, you know, we have, we're going to have 334 knock-on-wood apartments across the street from this. That's, it would be a nice facility for people that are living there. You know, you look down the road in 2030, that whole area, I mean, the town bought it. We knew we wanted to monetize it. We knew back in the early 2000s that that sports field is where we wanted to have some form of a headquarters for our sports Parks and Rec community area, if a private facility can potentially help us achieve that goal. Because, you know, we, again, and the warrant committees here, we see a very large bill coming at us for a school, a school that we desperately need. And if there are ways in which we can be creative to soften that tax bill, that's an ever, never-ending tax bill, this is why we're having this conversation. And it's really important to think, when we get tax dollars that go to our restaurants, when we get tax dollars that come into all the different shops in this town, it does help. Because we don't have a tax rate like Westwood has in other communities where they have such a strong industrial base, they can have two varying tax rates. We're stuck with one because we want to keep the businesses that are in town, in town. So, you know, I think it's really important to think of why we're having this discussion. And there's always pros and cons, and that tonight is a great night to continue to try to flush these out. So knowing that we have roughly about, you know, I want to give the community at least a half hour, but before I do that, so I don't get lost and I don't read some of these questions, I'm going to read a couple. Rachel is on here and she's asked a couple of the questions, one being, and I commented on this, "The subut's wetlands, Montrose is already having difficulty getting approval for their turf field. How would you tackle the challenge and ensure you aren't impacting our watershed?" That's something we, this never happens without our conservation committee stepping in. You mentioned that this is for sports community. Why are stores and restaurants necessary? How will this fit Medfield's current small-town atmosphere? Restaurants, having some facility to get a water, a Coke, a burger, or whatever while these are going on, just makes practical sense, in my opinion on that one.
Madam Chair, could I suggest that we go to the warrant committee members and the Park and Rec Commission members before we go to the general public?
I just want to get some of these flushed out. How will you access, excuse me, how will you allow access for the town, Parks and Rec, and private during the key, high-need times? What prevents from being dumped out to the higher, wait, let me read that and move in here. How will you allow access for town, Parks and Rec, and private during key, high-need times? What prevents them from being bumped out to the higher-paying clubs? And then Rob Tetrow, and I did want to get to this because Rob's on Parks and Rec. Rob, Parks and Rec Commissioner, he couldn't be here tonight, he's deferring to his colleagues. Is there awareness that Parks and Rec has funding for and is seeking approval for the installation of a disc golf course on and around the property? If so, could there be an opportunity for collaboration for such a proposal to include a disc golf in the future of this proposal moving forward? Again, I think it's important, you've said everything is on the table to be talked about, but I want Rob's thing to be brought up here. Once the land is sold, what control does the town really have about what is built? The community would have to rent the space. These are different comments that are being brought up. And let me go at this point out to the audience, and then I can read a few more towards the end. So I'm going to defer to, does anyone from Parks and Rec want to chime in right now?
Thanks for the new basketball.
Okay.
Thank you. Lauren Beatlesbacher, Six Deerfield, Parks and Rec Commissioner. We, Nick and I have met with Anton twice, once very informally at Rezum and once also very informally at Blue Moon. So very new, like, nothing, you know, this was our first time ever seeing this drawing, official drawing. So I do just want to, like, publicly say that I agree with you, Gus, that, I know, I know, that's why I felt like it was important to, you know, like, put it out there, that we've articulated the need for a community center. And as somebody who was on the open space committee and is on the Parks and Rec Commission, I also, you know, I feel very thoughtful about our open space in the community, and I know that that is an important piece of land. But if you look at all of the maps, there is actually a ton of open space in Medfield already, so I know that it is, like, not ideal, but there's still quite a bit of open space. And I do see the community being very, you know, thoughtful about that. I also want to point out to you that this is, we do need a community center. The FAF is closed, it's no more, it's not coming back. And I know that that was upsetting and it's sudden, and, but I'm not sure with the new school, as you guys have mentioned, that there would be an opportunity for us to have any kind of new building. And the programming that Katie and her team and Jackie and Christie, that they've been able to do out of these different buildings is unbelievable. And if we think about what they could do if they had a dedicated space that was actually safe for people, it could be really amazing and transformative for this town. And something that's very important to us as the commission and Parks and Rec is being accessible, and inclusivity is actually a very important word. And so being, so the fact that you had that up there, being inclusive, being accessible, that's what we want with a community center. And it doesn't have to just be sports. There's a ton of other programming, and we want to reach teens, and we want to reach adults, and we want there to be a place where people in the community feel that they can go and just go. And I, this feels like an opportunity for us to really develop that because I don't see the town wanting to absorb a cost on their own. So thank you, Anton, for coming, and thank you to the select board for, you know, even allowing this idea to come up. So thank you.
Medfield Youth Basketball, do you want to?
I'm at 25 Plathorn. I'm on the board of Medfield Youth Basketball, and I'm the scheduling coordinator. I missed the first part of your, I missed your whole presentation. I just...
It's recorded, you can watch it at home.
I'm just going to lay out some of the circumstances and not even try to weigh too much opinion and let, just to, so you know the lay of the land. We have 663 kids in Medfield Youth Basketball registered this year. That's over 5% of the population, so it's a big constituency. We do, like most towns, we contract with Town Hall to lease space from the public schools. They grant us access to the high school, to Blake, to Dale, to Wheelock, and to Memorial. For, and of the 660, it's not just younger kids, it's actually, our middle school is thriving. It's, you know, we have four sixth-grade travel boys teams, to give you some context, we have 24 travel teams. That's grades fourth through eighth. Our travel leagues are regulated by the Metro West. The Metro West doesn't let us schedule games at Wheelock or Memorial because the courts are, those are outfitted for obviously younger kids. And that's one drawback of basketball in this town and gym access in this town is we're not set up with three regional elementary schools, K to 5, that have gyms outfitted for fifth graders. We have a K1 and second and third, which kind of makes them more focused on little kids. And then unfortunately Dale's a little bit older, there's wood backboards, there's no bench area, you have to sit on the stage. The scoreboard has issues, but, so Metro West makes us, they don't even let us use those three. So compared to other towns, we are grossly underprovided. And it's not anybody's fault, and there's other benefits to having the school set up this way, I'm sure, I'm not just, but, so as a result of that, we have to contract with Kingsbury. We suck every hour they give us, and they're going to give us less and less because pickup ball's more profitable for them and some of the other sports they have. Everyone's doing it and they charge $6 a person, and it's great for them. So we also contract with Four Kicks. We have to, so we have teams that drive over to Four Kicks. We also contract with the Norfolk Aggie, and then we also contract with Charles River School. We get tons of complaints, you know, sixth grade, sixth graders who have to get up in the morning at, you know, for school, the buses at 6:50 in the morning, don't want to be practicing at 9:30 at Charles River. Charles River doesn't give us the times at 6 to 8, it's overflow for them. It's also very expensive. We charge $225 per kid to play basketball. Basketball is, I don't know, basketball is not a sport, it's not a glam sport, it shouldn't be a glam sport, right? It should be, if you're broke, if you go to Salvation Army and grab some old shorts and an old pair of sneakers, you should be on even playing field when you're playing basketball. But in our town, it's just gotten very expensive because 70% of our budget, 70% of that $225 is our facilities expenses. So we have real access problems, I would bet, and it's, again, not even a fault, the town agreement we have is probably as bad as any town in Massachusetts, if not worse. I don't, I can't prove it. I know, I know how Millis works, I know how some of the other towns work. Like, Millis has a rec center, Memorial Gym in their Town Hall, you know, anyway, but they have a much, much smaller town, much bigger, anyway. So we have, our kids have to go, and again, it's a big group and we're a great basketball town, we have to go to other towns, and it's very sloppy, it's very inconvenient, and our access is, and it's also inadequate. Teams practice once or twice a week, depending on the week. If you Google what's the right amount of practice time for a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader, it's probably four nights a week. We just don't have it. So anyway, from our perspective, and again, this here's my opinion, that was just, hopefully just kind of laying out, you know, we would welcome, Medfield Youth Basketball would welcome more access to gym space. I think we're desperate, it's not just need. And then the school year will shift next year, so we get the middle school, which is a solid gym, at seven o'clock or after, and then the high school from eight o'clock thereafter on weeknights. If that shifts back an hour, again, that's just, those are our only two good gyms will basically be off the table for us. It'd just be too late. And they have seven or eight high school, middle school teams that need to use those gyms, and it's not, you know, it's not their fault either. Anyway, that's just it, I just want to lay out some of our perspective from Medfield Youth Basketball. Happy to answer questions, although we have a youth basketball board meeting tonight too, so.
Thank you very much. Okay. If anyone just wanted, you can line up behind the mic if you'd like to ask some questions. I'm going first.
Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. I just have a very fundamental question. What was your driving motivation for bringing this forward? I don't think we really got that. And how does, how do you and how does Anax Partners benefit from this?
So good question. The first one, what was the driving? Hmm, I don't know the answer. Um, hmm, I don't know the answer. So I've, well, I guess, so I have three boys who play basketball. And so when my oldest, who's now in college, was, when he was in high school or junior high, we started kind of a travel program and we were trying to get access to gym space around and we didn't have it. So we started with two teams. And then we started to have more teams and we started to work with a predominantly girls' centric program that had a whole bunch of teams. They didn't have a lot of boys teams. So we came together with them and there was no gym space available. So like we're talking about here in the, we were in Foxborough at eight o'clock in the morning on a Sunday. You were in Lemonster, you were on North Shore of Boston, we were everywhere. And Caroline, who in practices and everything was just like, I got three kids, I'm going all over creation, I don't know what to do. And we didn't have court space. So we just realized that. And then as the programs that we were a part of grew and we had more and more demand, we just realized that there was a need for it. I don't know, any of you guys who drive along, but I live right down the road and I have this going in my front yard, like around the clock, because we just didn't have a place for kids to go in the rain and whatever it was. So we said, we need to find a facility. And based on the timing, as we talked about, the need was so great that just because we knew this would be a process and there was no guarantees that this will happen, we had to go to Walpole. So we're having a building in Walpole with four courts that we're in the process of opening now, just because we needed space, because we have hundreds of families and we had nowhere to put them. So that was really the driver at the end of the day. Does that answer the question? I had to think, I didn't even know why I was, came up with the idea, but that was why. Because we didn't have any room, we had no place to go. So we got a, an empty warehouse building in Walpole, which hopefully will be open in a couple of weeks, which is kind of like a Band-Aid. But we have people that come from all over New England, from Bangor, Maine, all the way down from Rhode Island, all over to be in these programs. And we didn't have any space for them.
Jeff?
Hey there. I'm Jeff Hyman, Metacomet Street. I just realized walking up here today that I've lived in Medfield for more than half my life. I have a few questions. Actually, I, I feel like I've missed something because what I heard tonight is conversations have taken place for a year. And I feel like I, I missed that or I just heard about this, you know, on Concerned Citizens of Medfield recently or, so I definitely missed something.
Because I brought it up.
I should have been at, like, there was probably meetings and public forums and...
I brought up my one-on-one with Anton.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I heard that recently. I heard that recently. I heard, you know, these conversations took place recently.
That was the start of it, though.
But I'm wondering, when this went back...
In all honesty, I think I met with Anton a year ago.
A year ago.
And, and so that was, and then, then a lot of things have gone on in this town that pushed different meetings out. But then finally, these two guys had a chance to meet with him in the last meeting.
Sure, sure. I'm just trying to understand.
And then about a month and a half ago, we said, we're going to bring Anton here.
Sure.
Do this night.
So this is like the first kind of, call it public...
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
...forum awareness. A lot of us are hearing it for the first time kind of thing.
Yep, yep. We gotta, we gotta start somewhere.
So I, I wrote you guys a letter, but then I decided, you know what, I'm gonna, you know, maybe I could just...
Okay, just, I'm going to be conscious of time because more people have, so fire away.
This is going to cost, this is going to take four minutes.
Okay.
Now, I have greenpeace on my booklet there, my, and anybody that knows me, you know...
And he's my neighbor, so we get along well.
We're neighbors, we're the neighbor. You guys know us, you know, if a neighbor wants to cut down a tree, I'll climb to the top of it and wait so they don't do that. So, you know, I appreciate the presentation. I think you've got a great business model. You know, having, you know, sort of moved to the consulting world for the last two years and working from home and spending more time on the property, I've spent more time there. So I'm going to read this now.
Go ahead.
You guys aren't going to, you're not going to like it, but I'm trying to be, take, let me finish. I'm trying to be reasonable and I just want to, let me get through it.
I just need you to read it because I don't want to cut you off. I want you to read it.
Roger. Okay. So, been here a long time. I'm on different committees, sign advisory board and different things. Majestic, bucolic, timeless and one of a kind. Those are the words and, and expressions that our residents use when talking about the property there. And that's the Medfield State Hospital property and nearby. That's the property we're discussing tonight. I, I'm here to express my concerns regarding the warrant article proposed by the select board that seeks to grant authority to give you the discretion to do whatever. The thing is, I feel like when we looked at Medfield State Hospital, there were, I think there's an opportunity here to sort of take a step back and I, I understand, this feels like the train left the station, but isn't there an opportunity to bring in our citizens, the voters of the town to say, hold on, before we even know what we want to do with this property, I understand that there are strong aspirations to dispose of and build on and make this property something else. But I'm not sure that may be the sentiment of everybody. And so, you know, is there an opportunity to sort of stop and go back up and say, hold on a minute, you know, we need to take a, take a pause and look at this property and get input from a wider community so that we can really understand what to do, which may be including leaving it the way it is. I don't know, but we don't know that yet. So, what, let me finish. What we have, what's at stake here is a crown jewel of natural open land. The, and generations have enjoyed it. It's no, it's no secret, the vast majority of Medfield voters support and deeply care about open space as evidenced by numerous surveys, polls and citizen input during conservation meetings and workshops conducted over recent years. I'd argue that the majority of citizens may not support a change in land use for this proposed project. I believe there are numerous risks and unknowns should the town of Medfield enter into an agreement with any private real estate development opportunity. It's nothing personal. I think you're a great person.
Jeff, Jeff, say the letter, I really have to cut you off. I hate to do it, but...
Roger. And what I'm just mentioning, some of the negative impacts to any, any facility, because it's important for people to know how some of us feel. One more minute. Elimination of multiple acres of agriculturally currently designated space. Wildlife habitat loss, including, including priority habitats of rare species, loss of continuity of the base circuit trail, environmental, environmental impacts to nearby protected areas such as wetlands, Army Corps of Engineers property, primary and secondary aquifer nodes, aquifer zones. I mean, the building itself, noise from commercial operations from HVAC systems, light pollution within an otherwise dark natural area, increased stormwater runoff in impervious surfaces, stormwater pollution from vehicles and deicing, increased vehicular traffic pollution. Thank you for listening.
All right.
I, I just want to urge us for a moment to take a pause.
Jeff, 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 honestly, the line is getting longer and we're getting, I, I need everyone to have a chance to voice their opinion. We've heard you, this is not going to be the only meeting and...
I guess what I'm saying, and I'll finish. I know you said that this is the only, won't be the only meeting and that there's an RFP process, but that's almost saying that the conclusion is that this is the way we're going. And I'm saying, I think it's, it could be a great project, but it's the wrong location at the wrong time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, could I suggest that we find out how many people want to speak and then divide the time that's remaining? I think Steve Callahan should have as much time as he needs, but...
As a chair, I mean, this, this one gentleman, Steve's up next.
Thank you. I'll be succinct. Jared Spinelli, 123 Green Street. Just for purposes of disclosure, I am an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I checked with, with Maria. We have no involvement, nor will I ever have any direct involvement. And in 15 years of living here, it's the first time I've ever come to a meeting and spoken up. And I do so for a reason. I give back in this community in two ways. One, for the adults by volunteering my time on the zoning board. The other, as a dad to two boys who are sports crazy. I teach all their sports, basketball, flag football, baseball, everything, soccer. And in doing so, I became involved with the NYBA, the Medfield Youth Basketball Association. I met Mike Broderick and see how popular and how much fun these children have in this town to get out there, move their bodies, exercise. I agree with the madam from, from Parks and Rec that it shouldn't just be about sports. I witness, my youngest is in kindergarten and I see the joy in some of those kids, not because they're playing basketball, they could care less, but they're smiling because they're learning how to socialize at five years old, where they're getting out of the house, they're making friends, they're getting confidence. There was a boy a few weeks ago who has zero interest, he'll never be an athlete, and he was my favorite because he smiled, he made a shot and he felt confident and he went back and then he wanted to shoot again and again and again, because that five-year-old had confidence. So I'm a big believer in athletics helping other ways of our lifetime. I was a horrible high school basketball player, but I love to play it. And I don't play, but I play for fun and I teach and I give back. And Mike is right, we have a dire need at the youth level to give back and get better adequate facilities. I also have volunteered as a coach at the Parks and Rec for both children in all of those sports. And, and my children have been affected by the FAF shutting down because we all know how competitive it is in the summer. And when the FAF shut down abruptly, they had to scramble and we had to scramble as parents with coverage. This town, how good it is, how affluent it is, deserves better facilities for our children, no matter if it's the Parks and Rec having a movie night or an athletic event or a dance party. We need better facilities. And I agree with Madam Chair that sometimes the opportunity is right in front of us and it might not be perfect, but if it's close and we keep waiting for the golden goose, it'll never happen. And I care about two things and I'm 40 years old. People, we have a lot of young families, a lot of young taxpayers in this town and we care about two things, our children and their education and our taxes, like most everybody else in this town, no matter how old you are. And we do have a big investment coming up with our schools and we have to figure out how to pay for it. And this might help us pay for it. And if you're not me anymore, you might have had children before, I ask you to think and look back when you did have young children in the system, how important something this might have been. And I hope that when I'm older and my children are grown, I will still vote for things that are helpful of children and their development. And so I, and I will always champion that for these people. The other thing I just want to say is it is informal. And Mr. Peterson, I actually give you a lot of credit because we don't have a great newspaper in this town. We might have years ago. But I get a lot of my information from your blog.
Oh, I'd like to hear that, thank you.
But, but here's a couple of things. So I learned about the fact that we're 25th most highest tax rate. We pay the 25th out of 391 towns or cities. We pay the 25th most taxes in the state and the Commonwealth. I, and I appreciate your comments and that's how we learned about this. But one thing I would just urge you to do, and I say this in all of the good faith and respect, you're essentially an abutter to this, to this, to this, this project. You, you were but to McCarthy Fields, which would have but to this project. Both of you had postings did not disclose that. I wanted to see if you gave the opportunity to say that tonight in your remarks. You didn't. And I think it does, and it's okay, but I think professionally it does color some of your feedback. Not only you said a couple of things, traffic, but then you suggested maybe we cut hospital road in half. I don't think you'd be saying that if you didn't live where you do. And I mean that again, with all the due respect in the world. This is an important project and I just think you should, on the air of caution, side with disclosure. So again, there used to be a building there, correct? So to the point about upsetting wetlands, you already answered that, Madam Chair, that that goes to the Conservation Committee and that'll be dealt with somewhere else. The fact that we could be upsetting decades or centuries of, of nature, there was a building there. So we're kind of where we need to be. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Jared, thank you so much. I would just quickly respond to you that I was a basketball coach too and I loved it. I was a high school basketball player and I was terrible.
Yeah, yeah.
But in terms of, of the ethics of my, not mentioning that I live next to it, both Gus and I live fairly near the state hospital and I've made the determination a long time ago that I, my proximity to either this parcel or the state hospital was not sufficient to create any issues for me.
You're closer to this project than you were to Hinckley South, Mr. Peterson. So I just, I just want to say that.
I totally recuse myself about everything.
I understand, but you...
Hinckley South, with the Kingsbury area.
I know.
Those were close enough that I didn't have any...
Absolutely. I'm just saying, because so many people read you, you're an important person in this town. And again, I compliment that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Steve.
Thank you for saying that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be brief because we want to start our meeting at 7:30. Steve Callahan, I'm the Chair of the Warrant Committee. With me tonight are nine members of the Warrant Committee that are appointed by the moderator, people don't know. And they do their best job to represent the town in their appointments. So we have young moms, retired people, you know, active working people on, on the committee. And we haven't discussed this article yet. It's on the warrant, we are going to get to it. And it's, there's still many questions, right? There's a lot of questions. And we'll work over our next couple of meetings, looking at that, right? But as the financial watchdog for the town, we spend a lot of time looking at our financial policies and objectives, which you folks have signed off on, our capital improvement plan, the financial forecast of what's, what's coming up over the next five years. And it's no surprise to anyone, it shouldn't be, that our town has several very large financial capital improvement items that for various reasons have been postponed or neglected for many years. To mention a few, a few have been mentioned tonight. We've got Dale Street School, the FAF Center, and we have a $20 million, $19 million bill to replace the roofs on our schools. So these will undoubtedly going to increase our tax levy on new residents, on all residents. And we've taken some steps in the last couple of town meetings to establish a tax mitigation stabilization fund for the, for the school building. We've been able to put away, if, if this article passes this year, it'll be 1.8 million. But the goal is five, six, five to six million dollars. And it's always been, and it's in the, in the financial policy to have that gap filled through potential land sales, all right? And I don't have to tell you that 12 acres of land in Medfield is not chump change. I mean, that's a significant, you know, significant number. So, so, you know, we're not going to be able to close that gap with just free cash. So it seems logical to, to me, I'm speaking just for myself, that it's logical and it's a prudent step to study this further. I see no downside to that. And it's consistent with the financial policy and objectives of the town. And, you know, it's, if, if it does move forward, it solves two big problems. The taxes for the school and the FAFs, potentially a, a community center, FAF center problem. So, but we'll, there are a lot of answers that, that we don't have yet, so.
Correct.
But that's hopefully what will come, so, okay?
Thank you, Steve. Eagle.
So Bill Masaro, Evergreen Way. I'm a butter of the core campus property. But I just want to quickly, in my background here and why I'm interested in this, why I'm concerned about this, I was on the committee that negotiated the purchase of the property, both the hospital core campus and Parcel B, where the 12 acres are located. One of the things that I argued when we were negotiating with the state was that we wanted to be able to sell some of that property. So I am not against the town selling the property. This is a very early stage in the process. I'm, I'm not neither strongly in favor of or strongly against any proposal at the moment. My concern is, and Eileen, you know what it is.
Yep, yep.
There are things that you need to, I hope you know about the property. If you don't, you should be aware of it as the process goes forward.
Yep.
All right? So there's more than just Conservation Commission who's concerned about what goes on over there. There are six structures, historic structures. Now, if you've been there and looked at the property, you saw stone walls, you may have seen some foundation holes and everything else, those are listed on the National Historic Register. The entire property, both the core campus and Parcel B, is within the Medfield Historic Farm District, which means National Historic Park Service, Mass Historic and everything else will need to be involved. And anything that you do that might affect that property, you should take that into your planning and your consideration as to where you cite the buildings. All right, so it's, it's, you know they're there, they're not something that you can just plow under and, you know, build over. And I would also point out that the town right now and Trinity have a very nice relationship with the National Historic Register. They're getting tax credits, they're getting Mass Historic tax credits. I would be concerned, at least need to check that you're not going to affect whatever you decide to do with the historic Parcel B items, that you don't affect any of the credits that will come to Trinity or to the town for the core campus.
Very fair statement.
And that's, again, that's all. I'm available if anybody needs any question, has questions or concerns or wants any further information, I will help. I'm not just purely environmental. You know, I'm concerned about the welfare of the town and I'd like to see the town go forward. And I'm also well aware of Park and Rec's problems. They were, I'm a 49-year resident and I could probably go back and look at 49 years when they were looking for, to, to build a building. And Gus was here when they were fifth, I, I was probably here when they were two or three. So, I mean, I wish them luck and hopefully this will work out. That's it.
Thank you.
Bill Senior reminds me that we should let everybody know that half of whatever the property sells for has to be given to the state under the land disposition agreement.
Yep.
Yes.
Pat? Pat Casey, I'm with, uh, Bellforge and I mostly have, uh, process questions. So first question, the, um, well, the warrant is going to be very broad, right? It's just for broadly for the, the disposition of the property, no specificity around the use. Do we imagine that the RFP is going to be just as broad? Or do we imagine narrowing it as a result of this as-yet-to-be-defined process that we're about to go through?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think what you just said is accurate, Pat. I, if you look at how Trinity bought the campus.
Mm-hmm.
We got approval from the town to dispose of that, that segment of the hospital property.
Mm-hmm.
But when Trinity got it, there's an agreement when you sell it and you specify what it's used for. So just to be clear, it's not like it can just be whatever it wants.
No, I understand. I was wondering whether the RFP would be broad and you entertain a broad range of, uh, because we've been talking, we started with sports, right? And we've kind of expanded the, uh, expanded the scope. Do we imagine narrowing it? My, my supposition is you'll say, yes, we're going to go through a process and we're going to, you know, the RFP will state different purposes that would be served. But I'm just trying to, you know, double check, make sure we understand that correctly.
We're just hearing about this for the first time tonight, basically.
Okay. So you don't know yet. Do you know?
But Pat, I'm not sure if I understand your question. The, if you put out an RFP, it's incumbent on us to put out an RFP which is specific, so you can't decide, hey, I'm going to bring a restaurant in there instead. Where it's going to be an RFP, and my guess is if this concept takes hold, a big component of that is going to be the collaboration and help and meeting town needs. So if that's me just getting out there on a limb. But you have to make it broad enough where if there's somebody out there who wants to do that kind of thing, they can do it.
Yeah.
But you want to make it specific enough so you don't wind up getting something that you didn't want there in the first place.
Right.
If this process gets to the point where the people here in Medfield think this is a good idea and it's good enough that they're willing to trust us to sell the property to carry that idea out, it's, it's incumbent on us to make sure that RFP is one that gets us to the station that people think that the train they got on is going to.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's more or less what I would have anticipated. Do we have, is it too early to ask what we think that is and who might participate in it?
Yeah. I, I would say this is the first night, so I think, literally, we just wanted to get this out in the public. Get a, get a chance for Anton to present his proposal so we're not reading on, uh, on internet or bumping into people downtown and they're hearing things that we hadn't heard about, like tonight we got it. So I, that, all I want people to do is take away from tonight is we open the conversation, right? Um, I, I think we're hearing people that, that like the idea and we're hearing people that don't like the idea. That's kind of the nature of the beast, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I sense there'll be a, a follow-up meeting as we continue on, uh, because town meeting isn't until May 5th. So, uh, we have all of March and all of April.
Okay, so there's no limit on what would be considered for uses at this point in addition to the core use that was?
So I think I could leave it as, what I heard tonight is a sports complex that has eight sports courts. So define what you can use in a sports court, just typically volleyball, basketball and pickleball, is what you see today.
Mm-hmm.
A restaurant to serve the people that are there, so they're not leaving while their kids are playing games, but it's not like he's looking to put in a Second Avenue North. Um, and, and parking so that people have the ability to access it, but being very conscious of what already exists there today, being the sledding hill. Bill brought up, and I knew Bill would, and I'm glad he did, you know, there's certain areas of that historic land that need to be addressed and, and not be taken lightly. Um, so I think that's where we're at.
Okay.
Well, I see it a little differently than my colleagues. I, you know, this is a, a very precious town asset and do we want to limit the potential uses to this recreational use? Or would we want to think about, are there uses that would return more for the town? I would, I'm not sure. I mean, you know, this is just presented tonight. Um, my goal is to get the best result for the town.
Okay. I'm being mindful of the time and I got somebody behind me.
Yep.
So you might be wondering why I'm asking the question. So cards on the table. Bellforge is doing a Phase One with the support of the town. Thank you very much. It's been, it's been terrific. We have, you know, we might ultimately get to a Phase Two, timing unknown. Um, we're anxious to keep options open for, you know, you know, for what that Phase Two might be. So we would be wanting to, we'd be wanting to have conversations about the degree to which future expansion might be considered and the scope of activities.
So Bellforge could use that land?
Potentially, yeah, in the future.
Okay.
You know, for a Phase Two. So that's where, that's where the questions come from.
But that would be a potential, again, that would be the potential lease scenario for a dollar, not looking to spend.
Oh.
No, or as a tenant to the, tenant to the, the private owner, right?
Right. And so actually, I'm not going to go into it because I'll, I'll go one-off with you because I know we're trying to meet. I actually, I, when I heard what he was talking about tonight, something Gene had mentioned to me popped in my mind that I'd love to throw by you guys and then we can bring it by them.
Okay.
So Laurel, fire away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street, this is Quick. Um, I'm a senior with grandsons in the school who play basketball. And we need eight courts. The boys practice late. Um, I fully support the program. And for the seniors, please think about this. Change is difficult, but we have to move with the times. Traffic is a fact of nature. I, I mean, it, it's going to be traffic no matter where you move to. So just be considerate and, you know, you want the young people in this town to vote for things for the seniors? Well, I think we need to support them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. One last remark, fire away, and then I'm going to try to read some comments. So I might be three minutes into your time, but I, I don't want people who typed not to be acknowledged.
I didn't type anything out. I wasn't actually planning on speaking, so I'll try to make it as short as possible.
Yeah.
Laurie Harmon, Lawrence Court. I'm a third-generation resident. My children are fourth, both in the school systems. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous.
No, 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 don't be.
Um, my understanding when we voted to buy the hospital land was to keep it open. Um, I know that we were planning on monetizing some of it and I believe when we sold to Trinity, we fulfilled that obligation. I would hope that we would see, um, the value of keeping some of Medfield's land open. Um, you know, do we need a facility like this? It sounds amazing. Yes. I think, I think that we, you know, park and rec has waited far too long, but I also think people want park and rec downtown. Like rebuilding Dale, putting park and rec with Dale makes sense. But again, you know, I feel like the town keeps coming up with these ideas that aren't listening to what the people want and it always comes back to location. I think most people want that land to stay open.
So in fairness, when we bought it, what we did do is, is zone portions of that land and 12 acres is developable. And as you heard our Warrant Committee Chair talk about, there's only so many ways that we can drive revenue in this town.
Right.
Right? And there's, and there's not a lot of open space. So all we're trying to do is flush out an opportunity. Pete brings up a good point. Is it this or is it something else? Tonight is a night where we start to flush out, what could we be doing with this 12 acres? Because what I can guarantee is we have a very large bill coming at us and the only thing that the responsible people appear should be doing is looking at ideas to be creative.
Right.
And I guarantee you, we're not going to make everybody happy. That I can check that box off.
Wasn't that 12 acres because you traded for a different area in town?
But we can't, we don't, we don't own the land. We, there's, if you don't, if you don't own the land, we can't, we can't ask a private citizen to do something that they may not want to do with their land.
No, but that 12 acres.
So, I'm confused. Thanks, Kristen. So back in 2008, we had an agreement with the state. We wanted to be able to develop a portion of that property.
Okay.
That we're talking about. And it was originally talking about a parks and recreation facility up there. So the state came out and we did a visit and they said, of that 37 and a half acres, you can build on 12 if you keep 12 acres down at the Home Quest property for agricultural land.
And that's behind WeLock.
Yeah. So we are allowed to have that 12 acres that we can build upon.
Okay, because you traded out for a different portion.
Yeah.
And what year was that?
2008. 2008, and then it was confirmed in 2014 in the LDA.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're going to listen to everybody. I, I can't stress that enough. Like, we're not going to shut anybody off. We want to hear from everybody.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And I had one quick comment, just because there's been a couple of comments about we need to have public input. When we bought this property in 2014, the town then spent five years to develop the strategic reuse master plan for this property. And that, that whole process was a very intensively public process. So the, the reuse master plan is the result of five years of intense, I thought it was too long personally, but it was five years of intense public interaction to get us to that plan. And that's basically the plan we're working against. So that was, but there are a couple of other parts of the property that are also geared for development, potentially.
All right. Okay, four quick questions I want to read here.
Thank you.
Uh, so Lauren Costello, this is a comment for Gus. I was one of the residents that emailed you with concerns. I'm not sure if others shared the same specific concerns about a private buyer, but when you paraphrased me, as you did with a sarcastic tone, that I didn't think fairly characterized my well-meaning outreach and wanted to clarify to the larger audience. Ed McGuire, what about traffic?
Can I respond to that?
Yep.
So, uh, just because I ought to. First off, I think that's my natural tone. Uh, there was no sarcasm, so Lauren, to the extent it sounded that way, I apologize. And secondly, I actually didn't have your specific comments in mind. There were a number of people that had commented about it being a private developer wanting to make a profit. My main point was to point out that you are not just a pure private developer trying to make a profit, that this was a nonprofit, it was collaborative. So I apologize, Lauren, if it sounded that way. That wasn't my intent.
I think that what I understand is that it's a private real estate development that's getting payment from a nonprofit basketball group. So the real estate side of it is a profit development.
Question, was that?
Is that the way, is that the way it's set up?
Yeah, so the, the real estate is owned and as a for-profit entity.
Yeah.
One of the tenants, right, is one of the programs, is a nonprofit. And then whatever, um, uh, arrangements are made with the, with the, uh, with the town for programming that the town would want to rent, that would be for-profit.
So it really is a, a for-profit deal.
I, I guess I would differentiate from a Kingsbury Club, which is a purely for-profit that does some nice things for the town. The whole concept of putting this together and, and designing the building involves collaboration with the town to help define it. Certainly the second building in that illustration is not a for-profit trying to make money off that building, it's actually delivering a facility for parks and recs.
Right.
So there's a piece here that's, that's, they're not, they're not a money-losing operation.
Okay, time out for one sec. I, I'm just going to read these questions because the one thing I, I don't like is when we don't acknowledge people that can't make it but have type questions. And so let me just continue on here. Um, Ed McGuire, what about traffic? Karen, not a question, but I think this is an amazing opportunity. We should stop kicking the can and do something. Rachel, hi Eileen, just to clarify, I'm not against a building in the space for Medfield. I am worried that this is pri, that this is private and can they do what they want once it's built and owned by them? Can we get a guarantee in this, in perpetuity as part of the sale that would go a long way, IMO? Lauren Costello, why Onyx, uh, would Onyx, excuse me, consider other locations in Medfield for this development? Then one more question, and this is Rachel. I apologize for leaving early, but I would appreciate if the public could be told at some point how we are being guaranteed these spaces that everyone just said we needed. I am all for basketball court for our kids, but how are we not overpaying and also being pushed into a 9:00 PM at this space too? So these are all things that, as if we move forward and we start looking at how this space would be used, how much park and rec would really have access, these are all things to be determined. But what I'm hearing you say tonight is, to the town of Medfield, if we move forward and continue to flush this out, we're not saying, hey, 9 to 9 is all about us, Medfield, you got the rest. It's all about, if you're going to work with community and you see and you hear from youth basketball and all the different groups, the only way you're going to be an asset to this community is if you help this community. And, and I'm not seeing you tonight stand there like this saying, sorry, that's not the option. So, so please, if everyone can just give us a time to continue to flush this out, I'm sure we're going to follow up. You're going to come back with some ideas that you heard here tonight. Um, certainly the idea of making sure that all parties are able to use it, making sure that our parks and rec group is able to turn, turn some revenue out of this, those are all going to be important components. Um, but I, I can't thank you enough for taking the time. I'm super appreciative for all the people that came out from the town. This is a community effort. I cannot stress that enough. This is not just three people up here behind the table, they're going to make the decision. I ran for disposition three years ago, I'm running again. Voices matter, input matters, you all need to be heard. And then we have to sometimes make the hard decision. But we, it's a lot easier to make this decision if people come forward and share. So all the emails we got, I genuinely appreciate. All the feedback we got tonight, I genuinely appreciate. And I'll let you jump in here, one last one.
Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize I'm holding up our own meeting. Um, Ashley Ladue on Vine Book Road and part of the Warrant Committee. Um, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation, for everyone's time here, and also note, I value open space, conservation land, and also community space. I was one of the co-chairs that built the new playground in town. Um, and I have a six and an eight-year-old and I don't think they're blessed with height, so unless they're the next Koozies, probably not playing, uh, basketball, but totally into community space. Um, so I see the value you'll bring. I think a question I had, and it's probably for your follow-up materials, is if you could provide comparables, you have mentioned projects that you've executed across the country, getting a better understanding of the success for those projects and how they've impacted the community, whether it's by revenue or, you know, different scholarships you've provided, like getting a better understanding of Onyx partners and how you'd be integrated into our community would probably benefit.
Absolutely.
You. Um, and then, um, I was also curious of what the next steps are for the conversation and dialogue between the community and this project. Um, is there a forum for submitting questions and getting responses, or is it meetings like this?
I think we need to regroup. We have a meeting again next Tuesday, correct? So I think it's safe to say it'll be on the agenda and we can kind of flush out what we heard, what we, how we best, how best to proceed. But it's, again, it'll be a conversation in front of you. We're not allowed to speak one-off, so anything that we talk about will be in front of the community and our next meeting is next Tuesday.
Thank you.
And our agenda will be posted by Thursday at 4:00?
Right-ish.
Around there?
Right-ish.
Uh, so.
Does this thing work?
Well, here's, it's for the people at home, not for people in the street.
I can't hear it in the back, so anyway, anyway, I have a comment. My name is John Beertie, I live on Blacksmith Drive. What about open, and your list of priorities in the town? Where does open space lie? Where's open space in that priority list? On the bottom?
Well, if there's 37 acres in that spot and all we're looking at is potentially building on 12 and it would benefit a lot of people, I think that we're looking at open space as still rather important, that we're not looking to try to cover 37 of 37 acres.
Is that the best place in Medfield, that the towns, the, the, the properties that you own to build this thing?
We don't own that much property.
Hospital Hill of all places, it is a place of beauty. Artists have painted there for years, even over 100 years ago. Bunker are great artists. I'm a fine artist myself. I go to Hospital Hill to let go of my inside and out.
But that's not going away. But that's not going away.
The ugliness inside of me, I let it go to walk among the trees, that heal me, and I find inspiration in the beauty of this place and the huge sky. I go find the sunsets, extraordinary sunsets-
But that's not going away.
...that heal me as a person.
But-
This is important. It's more important than all the sports and building buildings. It's the values of being a human being.
But that's not going away. That's why I don't want you to be misinterpreted, that he, Anton actually opened with Hospital Hill, where you sit and look out at that beautiful thing.
This is the sledding-
Yeah, and he's not, they're not touching that.
I don't want anything happen to that area.
We get that.
We hear that. And so did, literally, his opening remarks, because he brings his kids there, that area where people sit tonight, today, and they watch the sunset?
It's extraordinary.
Everything's going the other direction.
I'm glad you're bringing that up. You know, a few years ago, a few years ago, young people who had nothing else to do but have license and automobile, they enjoyed driving their cars around that great area, chasing everybody else away. So, so the town put up logs.
Yes.
Logs, so you can't drive in there anymore. Is that the solution?
And another thing, one time I was, I paint there alone, I was painting by myself, all of a sudden, this guy, rich kid with a fancy car, kept driving around. I got scared, so I called the police. The police came over, and they said, and then other kids came, they were smoking, and the police said, look, we can't do anything with this. They were rich kids, they have rich parents. The parents came over, it was a whole scenario. So after that event, I got scared.
I'm sorry you had that experience.
Many things happened there.
Yes, I know it's a beautiful place for sunsets, I'm aware of that.
It's extraordinary.
But I can't paint there anymore, it's impossible.
I'm just-
That's a comment, okay?
No, no, I appreciate that.
So you can do what you want. But I'm, what I'm saying to you is, is that the, is this the best place to do this?
Yeah.
So all I want to make sure you hear is, this is not just the three of us, we're going to listen to the town, right? So-
Well, we're townspeople, we've been here for over 30-
No, and that's, and coming here tonight, I so appreciate it, you're sharing, and where everyone's hearing it, which is great.
And I want to tell you one more thing, I learned about this yesterday. My daughter, I have a wonderful daughter, who's a philosopher, a master of philosophy, and so on and so on, and she works in New York City, in production of movies. Now she came, she told me yesterday, do you know what's going on? No. They're going to destroy Hospital Hill, she loves Hospital Hill.